I'd like to call the meeting to order. City Council Meeting, June 1st, 2020. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Cincilla?
Here.
Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pousa?
Here.
Alderman Randall?
Here.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dittelman?
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Weigant?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
All present. Tonight, City Attorney Harner, you're on the line, correct?
Correct.
Dean Hart, are you on, City Treasurer?
I'm here.
And Jamie Maitred, are you on, Jamie?
I'm here.
Okay, I did not ask any other department heads if there's something comes up and you need to identify yourself, do so at that time, but that will, that's the ones I was counting on for sure. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you can, where you're at, stand and join with us in the pledge of allegiance.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unmuted.
Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. I would like to open public participation.
I have something to say. I would like to participate, Patty Glory.
Okay, one moment, please, just one moment. Public participation, everyone will get two to three minutes on a topic about the city or preferably tonight's agenda, and Patty, you can go first.
Okay. In the past several months, I have been concerned about Art on the Square in its future. I recently drove through downtown the week before Art on the Square. I realized then, after I saw the construction site at the Meredith Home, that this year's show could not have happened in downtown Bellville. It would have been nice if the Executive Director, our Competition Chair, and Artist Registration Chair would have been privy to more information since we are the ones doing the show layout. Not knowing about the layout is detrimental to the event. We are dedicated to being the best, and details are of primary importance. That is why Art on the Square has been named number one more times than any other show across the country, and there are 6,000 shows a year. There shouldn't be any concern about our 20th anniversary show. We have enough to worry about raising over $570,000 to put on the show and our school outreach programs in four counties and St. Louis City. This has been accomplished by continuous networking for over 20 years. When these shows are no longer viable after a cancellation, it is imperative that the city and Art on the Square are on the same page about the 20th anniversary event. If Art on the Square would no longer exist, the positive economic impact could never be replaced. This would be extremely concerning, especially after the pandemic. In order to prepare for the 2021 show, we have to be proactive. I am requesting a meeting between the Art on the Square Board and the Aldermen or else a committee from the Alderman Council to discuss our 20th anniversary event. I'd like to tell all of you at this time that that anniversary event will be dedicated in memory of Alderman Jane Pousa. We could not think of a better person to honor than Jane. So I hope that you will consider my request seriously and that we can set a date with the Art on the Square Board and Alderman, just to make sure we're all getting ready for 20, our 20th anniversary.
Okay, Patty, thank you, and I will, I will promise, just get me, tell me when you're ready, I will, I will arrange for the meeting. If we can't meet in person, we can meet by Zoom, or we can meet on a teleconference as soon as you're ready. I can tell you this, when you folks made the decision this year due to COVID to unfortunately, and we understood, cancel the show, and then we ended up closing after that on the Meredith Home for the Lost Project, they made some adjustments once they knew there was no Art on the Square. But I think they're trying to get their work done up there as quick as possible and so that they will be, that we will be clear for next year. We will certainly include you, but once we heard that you were making a decision about canceling this year, we, we, they knew that, and they then knew that once they closed, they were trying to, I think, accelerate the work up front because they were not planning to in any way be a problem that, any way possible for the art show. They know our feelings about it, and I had many meetings with them explaining of our concerns, so we will work that out. You contact my office, and we'll set the meeting up, and, and we'll, we'll make this, we'll make this work, and we'll make the 20th year the best year ever.
Well, and it would be a shame not to have the 20th, 20th anniversary where it belongs in downtown Bellville.
We'll make that happen, we'll, we'll figure this out.
I appreciate all of you listening to me.
Okay, thank you, Patty, we appreciate, we appreciate what you do for Art on the Square. It's just a shame this year, so many things have been canceled due to this horrible virus, and we'll get through this, and we'll be ready for next year.
It was rather heartbreaking, but we got through it.
We'll get, we'll make it.
And by the way, I want you to know that the way Art on the Square handled the cancellations, we had a $5,000 donation by one person, that we were able to turn all the food fees back to the artists. We re-invited them for next year, which is, means that we will lose income on our, our entry fees and jury fees, but we felt like it was the appropriate thing to do, especially since the artists were all being hit so hard. And with the art donation, we were able to give each artist a $50 gift certificate to use either for groceries, or gas, or whatever they needed.
Very nice.
And we actually received letters from national independent artists of all ages across the country when they heard what we did from other artists. So it was the best publicity we could ever have. So we certainly appreciate the donor and everything that was, that the committee did.
That sounds, that, that sounds great, Patty.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. At this time, the next item is presentations, recognitions, and appointments. It's my pleasure to this month read and recognize the character word of the month, fairness. Fairness, meaning playing by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. So we need to remember the word fairness this month of June. At this time, as we did last meeting two weeks ago, I have a number, a number of appointments, and if, is there anyone objecting if we read these as a group?
I'll read them as a group.
Is that okay with everyone? Anybody disagree? Okay, I'm going to read, I'm going to read off the motions as one group to, these are, they're all reappointments, I believe, and they're all going, they've been serving before. Here we go. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Teresa Hessel to serve on the Park and Recreation Board for a five-year term. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Ashley Pollak to serve on Historic Preservation Commission for one year. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Justin Dominique to serve on Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Nicole Hettenhausen to serve on Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Keith Owens to serve on Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. I'd like to also recommend the reappointment of Tony Tenius to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission for one year. And the last one for the historic preservation, I'd like to recommend the reappointment of Linda Weisenstein to serve on Historic Preservation Commission for a one-year term. The last appointment today will be the appointment, my recommendation of reappointment of Don Wigney to serve on the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Do I hear a motion to approve those appointments?
Schaefer.
Who was, who was?
Ferguson with the first.
Ferguson and second by Schaefer. Any discussion on these appointments? Roll call.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. At this time, we flipped the page to number eight. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the City Council Meeting Minutes and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of May 15, 2020, May 18, 2020, and Minutes of May 28, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Wiggington.
Schaefer.
Wiggington and, and Steele. Motion by Wiggington to approve the minutes, I just read of those three dates, and Alderman Steele made the second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, we go to claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,443,015.28, and the payroll in the amount of $819,330.79. Do I hear a motion?
Wiggington.
Cincilla? Was that Cincilla?
Yep.
And who made the second?
Schaefer.
Schaefer. We have a motion by Cincilla, second by Schaefer, to pay the claims, disbursements, and payroll. Are there any questions about these items in your agenda? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report of April 20th and a Statement of Cash and Investments Report, April 20, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
Ferguson.
Ferguson. Second, second by Schaefer. Any questions about the Treasurer's Report or Statement of Cash and Investments? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing for audit signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We go to committees, no, I'm sorry, oral reports, but Administration, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an engagement letter with CJ Schlosser and Company LLC for audit services for fiscal year ending 4/30/20. For ending 4/30, shouldn't it be 21, Jamie?
It's the audit for last year.
Oh, for last year, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm wrong, for 4/30/20. Yes, I, I was jumping ahead. Do I hear a motion to approve that one-year extension for them? We had so much going on, we couldn't, who was the motion?
Dittelman.
Dittelman, and I hear a second.
Ferguson.
Schaefer.
Ferguson made the second. We have a motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Ferguson, to extend a letter of engagement with CJ Schlosser for one more year, for the year, fiscal year, 4/30/20. Any discussions on this? Roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Pousa? Pousa?
Alderman Pousa, did you hear the, the roll call?
Aye.
Thank you. Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Motion carries, Communications, Ms. City Clerk.
Downtown Special Service District Sidewalk Sale Request from Bellville Main Street to allow sidewalk sales and displays for the Downtown Special Service District retail merchants as part of the restore. Illinois Phase 3 for reopening business and returning people to work safely during the COVID-19 pandemic in regards to Resolution 3386. Merchants must maintain the required ADA access for the sidewalks.
I hear a motion to approve this request.
Duco?
Duco made the motion, who's the second? Steele made the second. We have a motion and a second to approve this request from the business owners, actually through Main Street. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Pose? Motion carries, we have no petitions. I'd ask for a motion to read title, by title only, Resolution 3388.
Schaefer.
Duco.
Schaefer, Schaefer made a motion, and Duco seconded a motion to read by title only of Resolution 3387. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, or, go ahead.
14A Resolution 3387, a resolution authorizing execution of a service agreement with the lowest responsible bidder for the supply of electricity for residential and small commercial retail customers who do not opt out of such a program.
Okay, is someone willing to make the motion, and then I'm going to have Jamie explain something before we open up questions? Is someone, or?
Elmore. Schaefer.
Schaefer and Elmore, motion and second to approve the resolution as read. But Jamie, can I get you to give a little bit of an update because there were a few questions earlier?
Sure. I think most of you probably know that in 2012, a referendum passed by the residents to allow for us to get with other communities in the area and participate in electric aggregation, which is essentially just a big consortium of other cities that bid for this electricity for our residents to try and get a better rate. What has happened, in, in the past, it's been a very beneficial program, unfortunately this past year, Ameren has dropped their rate significantly, and the electric aggregation rates did end up a little bit higher. But what we did is we informed all residents that at any time, they have the opportunity to opt out of the electric aggregation program. They are under no requirement to participate, they can drop out, drop out penalty-free at any time. So what's happening is our current contract with Home Field Energy for the electric aggregation supply ends in December 2020. So with our consultants and all of the other municipalities in our group, they're going out for bid in the next few weeks to try and negotiate, or try and bid for the rate that will be for the next term contract, which will start at the end of December 2020. So what this resolution does is it gives the mayor authorization to sign a service agreement with the lowest, most responsible bidder, because supply of electricity, the rate changes daily, so as soon as the bids are open, we'd have to sign, and along with the other communities as well. So what this does is it, it authorizes the mayor to execute a contract if the bids come in and they are lower than the current Ameren default rate. If they're not, I can tell you right now, none of the cities are going to sign and do this aggregation program, at least not right now. We have enough time that we could always postpone and bid again in another month or two, but it's looking like hopefully the rates will come in lower than what Ameren is at currently. And again, it won't start until, you know, January, but again, residents can opt out at any time, there's no penalties, there's no requirements, so that's, that's the best answer we give to residents when they ask why we're doing this, or why, why they're, I guess, being forced to participate, because they can opt out, they're not being forced.
Jamie Alderman Wiggington, how will the consumers know if they should opt out? How, how will they know if Ameren's more competitive than the other bidders? How, how will, how will they even know that?
So first of all, we wouldn't enter into a new contract if, if at the time of signing, Ameren is, is lower, but whenever a new contract is being entered into, notices are sent out to all residents and small businesses within the kilowatt usage at the time that the, before the contract starts, so they are given a, they're sent a letter with the opt-out instructions.
That's perfect. Hey, how come all of a sudden Ameren's becoming so competitive?
Um, I, I'm not the best person to answer that, but I know there's a couple gentlemen from our consultants who are maybe on the phone and maybe answer that a little better than me. Philip or Fred want to take that one?
Sure, if you like, thank you, Jim. Hi, this is Philip Carr from Good News, good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time. So quick answer to your question is, what's really happening here is that the, the energy markets have, have, have taken a dive, not least because of what's happening with the current COVID-19 situation and the impact on the economy. During this tragic time, the, the, a lot of things have, have been idled, and, and as a result, the, the prices have, have come down, so we're now within, so 10% of historic lows, and, you know, while, while Ameren can benefit to a certain extent, you know, and that's why their prices have come down, we as a consultant, you know, have a particular opportunity to actually, you know, lock in these, these low prices for, for longer than, than Ameren is allowed to with the price to compare. So the simple answer is it's, it's largely to do with the current situation. Fred, do you want to add anything to that? That's, that's right, not sure, not sure I can hear you, hear you, Fred, but, but, sir, sir, I hope, I hope that answers your question.
That's actually the perfect answer, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second to approve Resolution 3387. Are there any further questions? Roll call.
Pousa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Cincilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no ordinances this evening, is there any unfinished business I'm not aware of? Miscellaneous and new business?
Ovian, yes, ma'am, I have something.
Go ahead. Okay, I heard Ovian first.
Mayor, I have, I have concerns about housing not having meetings. We only had four meetings in 14 months, and recently, we've got eyesores from condemned properties that have been that way for the past four years, and it's getting worse. At 9617 West Main Street, there's now a hole in the roof, and it's getting, it's getting worse and worse. At 96 North 98 Street, vandals got into the property, and the property is wide open. And we cannot get a meeting to set up, mayor, and it's getting to a point where we need to know when we're going to get the [inaudible]. You know, for the [inaudible].
Okay, well, Raffi, as you know, we have been, we have been limited to meeting in person for groups of 10 or, you know, under, and we have, you know, the City Attorney and I have stated, when there's not been any particular action that's needed to be taken, you can certainly, that's the first I've heard about 9617, if you want to call me tomorrow, I'll get on these couple of cases, I'll make sure that they're followed up. I know Lieutenant Colonel Icecan's back tomorrow, he's been off a short time, but he'll be back tomorrow, and we'll follow up on these concerns, but we're, we're, we're just trying to do what's right far as minimizing the amount of times that we, that we meet. We know that people still like the, you know, the transparency of an open meeting where they can come to or listen, and this is working, but if we, my advice to committee chairman, if there hasn't been a particular action to be taken, we can certainly try to work some of this out by the phone and with staff, so you, you call me tomorrow. I'll, I'll give you a call on Monday around 10 o'clock, mayor, thank you. Alderman Elmore?
Yes, sir, thank you. Without the committee meetings, and I understand why we don't have a committee meeting, so I'm fine with that, and I, I support it, and I know it's a challenge. The, but I would like to give, ask for, for, to have something on, on the agenda for the next City Council meeting, because we would discuss the seven committee meetings, but we're not going to be having one. Could we get an update, you think, at the next City Council meeting, so the right people can prepare whatever update they can give us on the module that we had discussed when the reconfiguration of housing and the zoning configuration that came with, you know, and this Lieutenant Icecan hide on, and the whole reconfiguration and that, there was going to be a, a module that was going to improve communication, and it takes months, I'm sure, and, but without the committee meetings, we just have no idea, you know, like how far down the road, are we years away, months away, weeks away? And if we can just get an update at the next City Council meeting from the right person that's working on it the most, which I don't even know who that is, but whoever it is, could they just make an update at the next City Council meeting is my request, I'd appreciate.
I'm looking at him right now, it's Scott Markovich, and he has I'm, I'm looking at him right now. It's Scott Markovich and he has been working with them. Uh, things have slowed down with every corporation this past three months because most of these people too are working from home and, and things have kinda slowed at, at a definite different pace. But I will get you that update. We'll get a written answer and we'll get that out to everyone. She certainly deserves some update. I'm curious myself. And, uh, while Rich has been, uh, Rich, while Scott's been keeping me updated from time to time what he's learned, it has come to a much slower pace. So, good question and we'll have a, we'll have an answer, uh, on that coming out real soon, a few days down the road.
Appreciate it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd ask for a motion to approve the motor fuel claims of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Elmore. Wagon.
Elmore and Wagon made the motion and a second for motor fuel claims. Any questions about, uh, uh, any questions about that? Hearing none, roll call.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let me just make this statement. Uh, maybe we don't, as Garrett and I talked earlier today, maybe we don't need to go into executive session. This is identical to what we did the last two meetings where we, uh, uh, changed to a, a furlough from a layoff, and that's the request in your packet. Um, i-if, uh, if no one needs to go into executive session, we could just, uh, stay in open session and ask for someone to consider an approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Telecommunicators and Secretaries, Bargaining Unit concerning bargaining unit member furlough. And it's spelled out in your packet. This is exactly the same as prior, uh, situations that we dealt with. And unless you have some particular additional questions, because I don't wanna be talking names and particular things in, in open session, but if there's a willingness to, uh, move this forward, we wouldn't have to go to executive session according to the city attorney.
Can someone make the motion to approve?
Wagon. Sir?
Okay, so i-is, does, does anybody have a problem if we don't go into executive session to discuss this? Okay, then is someone willing to make a motion, willing to make a motion, uh, for eighteen B?
Schaefer. Schaefer.
Schaefer made the motion, Consilla seconded, or vice versa? Vice versa. Consilla made the motion, Schaefer seconded. Does everybody understand the motion as written?
Yes, sir.
And if, if there's no problem, if, if there's no problem proceeding like this, I ask for a roll call vote.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Rothweiler, so moved.
Rothweiler, who's the second?
Duco?
Duco.
Mayor, before we, before we adjourn, this Ovian, I had someone ask me today, will the parks open at all this year?
Is, is what now?
Will the parks open at all this year?
The parks are still open. They just can't still use the playground or the skateboard park at this time and the park programs. But the parks are open. You can walk the trails. You can play tennis, uh, two at a time. You can, you can, uh, fish in the lakes. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
The, the parks have not been closed, just the programming and the playgrounds have been closed, uh, as well as the skateboard park. All right?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn and with that, all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you.